...the first meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent Counselor Green, would you please lead us in salute to the flag?
I quite like to introduce you to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Shultz?
Here.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Here.
Counselor Walsh?
Here.
President Zerolot?
Here.
Counselor Boishman?
Here.
Counselor Kuchar?
Here.
Counselor Cragan?
Counselor Cruz?
Counselor Jeanette Ali?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
Here.
We have nine members present.
Thank you very much. Incidentally, I have been asked by Counselor Cruz to note that he is stuck in Boston and wished to participate remotely, but due to the logistical complications of remote participation, I was forced to deny that request. Let's see, public forum. We have no one remotely registered this evening, and I believe we have no one signed up for public comment for this meeting. I would like to remind the public that the sign-in sheet at the back is for the council meeting. Please do not annotate it. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on any item on the agenda, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name, city of residence, and the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and you will then be permitted to speak on that item for not more than two minutes. Seeing none, we have our announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, May 30th, from 4 until 5:30 p.m. in room 205 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. The first monthly meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group at the Fitchburg Senior Center, 14 Wallace Avenue, will take place on Thursday, June 6th, from 2:30 until 4:00 p.m. in the card room. Bonnie Shaylor and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate. This initial monthly meeting at the Senior Center is an additional regular meeting of the group, and the group will continue to meet every other Thursday at the Fitchburg State University Rec. Center as usual unless otherwise noted. The Fitchburg Health Department, in partnership with the UMass Chan-Fitchburg Family Medicine Residency Program and UMass Memorial Health, Health Alliance, Clinton Hospitals, Simon-Sinon Regional Cancer Center, is hosting a free skin cancer screening on Thursday, May 23rd, from 4:30 p.m. to 6:15 p.m. at Simon-Sinon Regional Cancer Center, 275 Nichols Road in Fitchburg. Monday, June 10th, at 6:00 p.m., there will be a community conversation about pets here in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street. It will include Fitchburg Animal Control Officer Todd Pickett, Nicole Roberts, Ahimsa Haven Animal Rescue, Street Cat Angels, City Counselor Sally Cragan, and other members of the city council, as well as B-positive therapy pets. You can join residents and animal advocates for a presentation and conversation about animal issues in Fitchburg, including an overpopulation of stray cats who are dehydrated and malnourished, and a large number of unclaimed stray dogs in the city. Light refreshments and theropaws pet teams will be present. That is June 10th, 6:00 p.m. here in the Legislative Building. Next, we have a report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kuchar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening. We took up a number of new appointments. First was a new appointment of the Fitchburg Board of Commissioners of the Trust Fund, term to expire January 19th, 2027, Jonathan Thompson. That was held to hold until Mr. Thompson can come before us. We had a new appointment of the Fitchburg Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds, term to expire January 16th, 2025, Josiah Richards. That was given a vote of three to one to withdraw. The new appointment, Fitchburg Housing Authority Board, term to expire May 1st, 2029, Janice Mulain. That was approved unanimously. New appointment of the Fitchburg Council on Aging, term to expire May 1st, 2027, Anne Fitch. That was approved unanimously. New appointment of the Fitchburg Council on Aging, term to expire May 1st, 2027, Rose De... Alessio? Rose, you want to help me out?
Alessio.
Alessio? That was unanimous. Next is a new appointment, Fitchburg Council on Aging, Eleanor Zekely. That was unanimous. New appointment to the Fitchburg Board of Registitors, term to expire April 1st, 2027, Elmer Eubanks-Archibald. That was unanimous. New appointments to the Fitchburg Cultural Commission, term to expire April 1st, 2025, Dominic Icapino. That was unanimous. New appointment to the Fitchburg Conservation Commission, Brad Joseph Pelletier. That was also unanimous. New appointment to the Fitchburg Conservation Commission, Catherine Wallace. That was also unanimous. Reappointment to the Fitchburg Board of Licensing Commissioner, term to expire May 1st, 2030. That's Richard Bossgarden. That was also unanimous. And then a reappointment to the Fitchburg Board of Commissioners of Trust Fund, term to expire January 20th, 2026, Sophia Bogdazerian. That was held three to one to hold.
Move that we accept the report of the committee with the exception of the three appointments to the Commissioners of Trust Funds?
Second. I have a motion on second. Also, Mr. Chair, could I just confirm that the appointment of Dominic Icapino is to the Agricultural Commission?
Oh, what did I say? Oh, I apologize. Yes, it's Agricultural Commission. My apologies, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have a motion on second to approve the recommendations of the Appointments Committee as to all items except the appointments and reappointments to the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. We now have before us three remaining appointments.
Mr. President? Vice President Van Hazinga? I understand the requirement to appoint members of the Commissioners of Board of Trust Funds is a time-crucial appointment. Could we hear from the mayor as to why this is needed and why we should act tonight?
Thank you, Counselor. So, we have had a few requests for scholarships for students, and these are often students that are in need of funding to get their... to access their college, you know, expeditiously, right? These are often students that need this money quickly. So, it came to my attention after we've received the first scholarship that the previous... the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds had expired in 2021, and the previous method of approving these scholarships were by email. So, I decided that, you know, this needs to be done in the proper process and, you know, approve the members. You know, I tried to get an emergency, you know, emergency meeting with the existing commissioners. However, two of them were unavailable. Only Sophia Bogdazerian, the existing commissioner, was available to do that. So, you know, we had to make this happen quickly for these students. You know, in addition, we have the Cogsall Park Trust Fund that owes the Friends of Fitchburg... Friends of Cogsall Park a significant sum of money for a number of years. I guess there's been some challenges in getting that funding. So, we want to just write these actions and make this happen, but largely, you know, the request would be that we expeditiously, you know, appoint these individuals for the students' scholarships. You know, we have a number of welfare funds as well, which are often timely. I don't have a current application for that, but we do have two applications for scholarships.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are you all set on that?
I would make a motion to approve all three appointments.
Second. On the motion, I would just like to say, right off the bat, I'm certainly in favor of approving the two held appointments. I understand why they're being held because the individuals aren't present, but these are both individuals we are well familiar with as a council. And I would like, before I take my own vote on this, I would like to inquire from the committee members as to the reason for giving the appointment of Mr. Richards leave-to-withdraw, because I certainly do not put forth the proposition that the mayor's appointments should be rubber-stamped by the council, but at the same time, I am hesitant to second-guess those appointments without a clear reason for doing so. And I believe I saw Counselor Fleming's hand?
Well, my hand was up regarding the reappointment of Sophia Bogdazerian. I did not read "reappointment." I read "new appointment," so I am going to change my vote on that.
Okay. Anyone from the committee who would like to address any of those matters? Counselor Jeanette Ali?
So, first of all, I want the public to understand that the Appointments Committee was never given any information that these were time-sensitive and that they must be passed tonight. Wasn't given anything. So, this is news to me. I'm sure it's news to my colleagues on the committee. So, we've had this for... since Friday? Ms. Clerk, is that correct, Friday? We've had this since Friday. None of us knew that this is so critical that the children of our school district will not be without their money if we don't pass this. You know, left that part out. And so, I speak in this tone because I'm a stickler for history and how people have reacted in the past under prior leadership, where if this happened, these same people would be apoplectic that they weren't given proper notice or information, and that we have to feel compelled to vote for something because... because where if we don't do it, kids won't get their scholarship money. I'm sick of playing this game, and I'm consistent. Some people aren't. There's different rules when there's different leaders, apparently. No information, no heads up, so the committee did what it did. And now, we're going to look like we are not considerate of the situation? I don't care. I'm not voting for it. Quote me, all right? If this is so sensitive, where's the letter saying it's sensitive? That's what I was told for eight years prior. That's a necessity. Now, it's no longer a necessity. Some may forget. I don't. I watch the tapes. So, I'm not changing my vote until the committee has given the due respect it deserves for timely information. Thank you.
Counselor Schultz?
I just want to say, now that we know, why hurt the students? Why don't we just approve the three appointees, as Counselor Van Hazinga just said? Thank you.
Counselor? Mr. President, can the commission function with four members?
It's my understanding that they can.
Well, I'm just saying, because I voted against one of the appointments, and I'm not changing that. So, I wasn't opposed as a member of the committee in spite of the lack of information, because I know Ms. Bogdazerian, and she's done this already, and because Mr. Thompson is simply the superintendent, and that's been practiced for 25 years, okay? So, in lieu of not getting any information, I let that slide with those two appointments. So, that would give you four members, all right?
Clarification, there are three members.
Just a moment.
Well, that's a quorum, is it not? That's a majority?
I believe it's a five-member board, so yes, three is a quorum.
Three-member board. Three-member board.
Oh, oh, I see. It's apparently a three-member board.
Well, it says on the city website it's a five-member board.
That would mean, if there are alternates, that may account for that, and it may be the case that two members is a quorum, but regardless, I think my remaining question that I don't quite understand and that I would like to understand, because I don't want to vote just on my gut, is I can see why, if the committee was not aware of the time pressure, it may have wished to hold certain appointments for further review. I still haven't heard any reason from any member of the committee for rejecting one of the appointments. And Counselor, yes, since it's my question, I'll... even though you've spoken twice, go ahead.
If there's three members of the board, Mr. President, I, as a member of the committee, did not oppose the first two, so you have two members of the three.
Sure.
I didn't oppose the third one because I don't believe he's qualified. Period.
Anyone else on the motion? Counselor Van Hazinga?
Just a little puzzled by the decision to hold and reject the appointments. The superintendent is typically appointed as a matter of course due to his position. The other one is a reappointment. There were other appointments here that were people... individuals who were not present who were approved, just not these two. I'm not sure why. In terms of the Mr. Richards, whose appointment was not approved, I still haven't heard a reason why. I'm willing to listen. It does seem like, I believe it was a master's in nonprofit management?
Yeah. I mean, it's a nonprofit...
So, and he has a sense of experience in board governance. I don't know Mr. Richards very well, but it seems like he would be qualified for the position, so I'm not sure why to oppose it. So, I would encourage everybody to approve the appointment.
All right. Anyone else on the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In opposition?
What was the motion?
Were we taking them one at a time?
The motion was to approve all three.
All three, no.
Let's do it one at a time.
I thought it was...
As they are three separate agenda items, yes, we must divide the question upon request of any one Counselor. So, do I have them?
Do you accept Mr. Thompson's appointment?
Second. I have a motion on second to accept the appointment of Jonathan Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In opposition? Unanimous. Can I have a motion for the appointment of Mr. Richards?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion on second on the appointment of Josiah Richards. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In opposition? Three in opposition? Motion passes by a vote of six to three. And on the appointment of Ms. Bogdazerian?
Move to appoint?
Second.
I have a motion on second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In opposition? It is unanimous. All right, that concludes the business of the Appointments Committee. Report of the Committee on Records. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
I'd like to make the motion with your step.
Second.
I really do.
I have a motion on second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. We have two new appointment letters. Michaela E. Horn as Treasurer/Tax Collector in Training, effective June 5th, 2024, followed by appointment as Treasurer/Tax Collector on June 22nd, 2024, for a term to expire June 22nd, 2027. And Special Police... and James R. Arsepreet as Special Police Officer for the City of Fitchburg. Those both stand referred to the Appointments Committee. Next, we have two promotions. The promotions of Provisional Deputy Fire Chiefs Patrick J. Roy and Patrick G. Haverty to Permanent Deputy Fire Chief. Chief Suarez?
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. And once again, thank you all for your time and the use of this venue so we can acknowledge the accomplishments of our two firefighters that we have here before us tonight. Captain PJ Roy and Captain Patrick Haverty have successfully passed their mass civil service examinations and are the top two candidates to get promoted to Deputy Fire Chief. At this time, I'd like to call them both up so that I can introduce them to you, gentlemen. First, I'd like to introduce Patrick Haverty. He is a third-generation firefighter, as his father and his grandfather were both on the Fitchburg Fire Department. His grandfather joined the Fitchburg Fire Department in 1918, so there's been Haverty on the department almost continuously for over 100 years. Patrick Haverty has been a Fitchburg firefighter for over 30 years, and he himself has been involved in all aspects of the Fitchburg Fire Department. He has vast experience in all facets of firefighting and emergency responses. He has been involved in the union as an officer for nearly 20 years. He has negotiated labor contracts, has written grants, and has been a tremendous leader to the entire Fitchburg Fire Department on so many different levels. PJ Roy, to my right, is also a third-generation firefighter. His grandfather came onto the department in 1947, his dad and his uncle in the early '70s, and now he works alongside his brother Sean and his cousin Andy. To say that firefighting is in his blood would be a true understatement. PJ Roy has been a firefighter for nearly 18 years, and just like Patrick, is also involved in all aspects of our job. He has immense firefighting and emergency response experience. He has written nearly $1 million worth of grants for our city and our department. He helps firefighters' families with bereavement services whenever sadly one of our active or retired firefighters pass. He is involved with city functions, such as Firefighters Memorial Sunday and Preparing and Planning, the Fourth of July Day Parade, and is also a vital leader to both junior and senior firefighters, just as Patrick is. He's vital to those alike. I feel that we are very fortunate and very lucky to have these two candidates before us tonight. They both exemplify what it means and what it takes to be a Fitchburg firefighter and to be a senior fire officer. They both have the experience, the fire knowledge, the leadership skills, and most importantly, the respect from their peers so they can accomplish any task and manage any emergency incident that gets thrown their way. They have both sacrificed time away from their families so that they could serve our city, our department, and our residents, and there is no doubt in my mind that this duty and dedication will continue long after they are promoted here tonight. For these reasons and so many more, I am very proud to present Patrick Haverty and PJ Roy to be sworn in as Deputy Fire Chief before the mayor, the council, their peers, and their family and friends here tonight. So, again, counsel, I thank you very much for your time, your attention, and the opportunity to present them here tonight. And to Patrick and Patrick, I say congratulations, and it's well, well-deserved.
Before we have the swearing-in, I know there were a few counselors, including myself, who would like to make a few remarks. Counselor Boishman?
Yeah. Chief?
Yes, Counselor.
That brings you the total number of deputy chiefs to, what, five?
That's five. Five deputy chiefs.
And Mr. Haverty, get a second. Tom and Scott?
This one, yes.
Oh, yeah. I went to school with him, that's why.
Counselor Jeanette Ali?
Yeah, Chief, when you came to us earlier this... was it this year or I think it was last year about the fifth position?
Yes.
And you presented it as someone who would be technically the second-in-command when you're not present or...
Correct.
To it. And what made it easy for me to agree to that organizational change was the fact that I expected Deputy Chief Haverty to take that role, because there's no better person suited for that position.
Yeah, and he has. And as soon as we implemented that fifth position, it has made work a lot easier, and we've seen a quick impact on that position and what it does for our department.
And people who asked me about why that was necessary, my understanding was, you know, the four deputy chiefs, they're on shift.
Correct.
They're the command person for that shift, and they have to go to the fires. They have to go to the calls. They're not overseeing operations at the station, and there's no one that takes your place when you're not able to do the job or you're on vacation or something. So, it made sense from an organizational perspective, and I couldn't think of anyone better than Deputy Chief Haverty, considering his extensive experience, being an officer of the department for many, many years, understanding the union, understanding FEMA, all that stuff, fire prevention, you name it, he's done it all. So, it was a natural...
I couldn't agree more, Counselor.
It was a natural thing. It made my decision very easy.
Well, thank you.
For Deputy Chief Roy, I just said to PJ it took so long, because PJ is someone that I think was suited for deputy chief at 21 years old, because when he was born, he was wrapped in a firefighter's outfit, you know? He lives down the... he used to live down the street from me, him, his brother Sean, Andy on Milk Street. And for someone who has no firefighting experience, I like to tell people that I feel like I'm a firefighter in another life because of the extenuating training I received from him when we were in elementary school, above my parents' garage in the loft. It was our makeshift engine, makeshift fire department. He decorated it. He had stationary. He had us wear... He had us wear uniforms. He'd steal his father's every now and then, you know? Jim was always like, "Give me that hat, Jeanette Ali," you know, because I'd take his fire hat, you know? He had like five of them. And I still have one of the hats in my garage. But what I'm trying to say is, he was... he was, "Write your reports. I want to know what happened to that girl that jumped off the cliff." And it's... it just... the kid knew everything before he was 10. And I've always wondered, when the heck is this guy going to run the place or be close to it? So, I was very happy to see this, and I thought it was a long time coming. It's only natural. And so, the fact that he's now one of the four at the helm of our shifts, the city couldn't be in a better position, because when you talk about someone who loves the job...
Yeah, knows it.
This guy is the epitome of loving what you do. And I saw that as early as five, six years old. So, this is bittersweet.
It is.
And I don't think anybody deserves it more than him, and I'm very happy for him. His family and, you know, his grandfather and his father are heroes. And, you know, we lost his father because of this job, and he's a hero. No question about it. They all are heroes, but he has a special place. And so, I'm sure he's looking down right now as his bucko, and they're... they probably expected this too. I mean, like I said, since he was born, this was where he was due. So, I spoke long enough, but it's just a testament to the 41 years I've been on this earth.
Well, I'm sure I can speak for both of them when they say, "Thank you."
How I've seen him being groomed for this since day one, and to see it finally come to fruition, very happy to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Yes, I will say that it is bittersweet only because I reflect back on moving to Walton Street.
Neighbor.
Neighbors. The Roy boys were hell on wheels. All the Roy boys. And I'm so pleased to see how far you've come with your commitment through all the testament, all the tribulations, all the trials, all the heartache. You know, losing your father was a sad day. Red was one of my favorites. You know, we communicated, we talked the same talk. He always took the time, as I was a, you know, new counselor, as Deputy Chief Haverty as well, always took the time to explain to us what the fire department did, not only on a daily basis when we saw you go running into fires, but all the other aspects of it. So, I appreciate you both very, very much. It's hard to believe that it's been 30 years having, you know, relationships with people on the fire department, but I appreciate that not only as a resident but as a counselor. So, I am so proud of both of you. I'm proud of the department. I'm proud to be part of a community that enjoys promoting from within and recognizing the talent that we have. So, continue with your good work. Be safe. Keep us informed on what's happening with the firefighters' health and what we need to be aware of at all times. So, thank you, and I couldn't be prouder to be sitting here, part of the So thank you, and I couldn't be prouder to be sitting here, part of this appointment. So it means the world to me.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, I'll keep it very brief, because everyone said pretty much everything I would have said, but I've had the privilege of knowing both of these gentlemen for quite a while now. PJ, maybe a little bit longer. We played Little League together. And the city is indeed very, very fortunate to have you both on the Fire Department in the first place, and now taking on these top leadership positions. I know that going forward, the department will continue to be in good hands. Congratulations, it's very well deserved.
Motion to approve?
We don't, we don't need to vote to approve, but we'll clear out now, and you guys can get sworn in.
You guys go up to the front. Go to the front.
If you could please reach your right hand and be at the door. I do solemnly promise this way.
I do solemnly promise this way.
That I will faithfully and passionately.
That I will faithfully and passionately.
Perform and discharge all duties.
Perform and discharge all duties.
Accompany.
Come with a party.
As a...
As a...
Permanent.
Permanent.
Deputy Fire Chief.
Deputy Fire Chief.
For the City of Fitchburg.
The City of Fitchburg.
So help me God.
Well, I could have gone on for 20 more minutes, yeah.
It's the audience.
On the, where the heck is it? What's that? I am.
Hey, calm down. Listen. I can't help it, I love it so much, it's just... I'm hoping to hold it, because it deals with the budget. I tried to do that last time.
If we said that to him, we'd have only been here as early as you know, Bob.
Yeah, I could change the...
Right. Yeah, buddy. Yeah.
I'm probably going to get all of my stuff in one place. I figure there's no actual necessity.
11 and 20. Shit, unbelievable.
Oh my God, I could have gone even longer with my dad. We used to get my dad nuts. Oh my God. You don't forget those things, though.
No, you don't. I will never forget these thoughts.
I knew more about fire science than anybody who's not a firefighter.
We have a large number of finance orders. If no one objects, I will waive the reading of those orders, and they will stand referred to finance. Seeing no objection, they stand referred. The budget orders, which also, with consent, I will not read in full, I would like to entertain a motion to refer them to council as a whole for tomorrow, Thursday, and the following Wednesday. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, if, I'm sorry, the following Thursday, thank you. I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take it by unanimous consent. All right, that's it. We have 135-24. Order that whereas a certain utility easement is needed to provide fire suppression for the structure located at 305 Main Street. Now therefore it is ordered that the City of Fitchburg, upon vote of the City Council, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15, shall authorize the mayor, Samantha Amquaglia, to approve and authorize the execution delivery. I'm going to cut this short, if it's all right. Basically, we're taking an easement for fire suppression utilities. This will stand referred to city property. And then there is an ordinance...
Mr. President?
Counselor?
136-24, I'd like to have that go to the full council as a whole.
You can make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
This is a motion for suspension. Actually, I should say the other one was as well, but since it was unanimous, I don't feel a roll call is necessary. The other council as a whole motion. So I have a motion to send 136-24 to council as a whole under suspension of the rules. To be clear, this would be a separate council as a whole meeting, not the budget meetings. Do I have a second?
Andy, you want that?
No.
Is there a reason why I can't have a...
I could, it just, those meetings are already going to be running pretty long.
What's the reason for this?
Well, see, Mr. President...
Wait, 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 I need to get a second first. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, but...
Well, hang on, now that I have a second, hang on, hang on just a second, Counselor. Now, who did I have on the motion first? I had Counselor Boishman on the motion, then I'll go to Counselor Jeanette Ali.
Okay, the reason why I asked for this, because I really would like to have Sue Davis in front of us too on this, and I'm making cuts on the budget, and I'm making some cuts already on some of these page raises.
Okay.
And I'm really, you know, I don't want to go into detail, but I want to find out from her exactly. She's the one that came up to us and said it's different things.
Right. So I will note, by the way, as we discussed before, motion for suppression, for suspension, rather, is a non-debatable motion, so the maker of the motion was entitled to give a brief statement of why he was making it. Do you have a clarification question, Counselor?
I have a clarification question. You mentioned, Mr. President, this would be a separate from the budget packages. I'm just questioning if it's because of open meeting law, where we can't get it on there tomorrow, couldn't we get it on there Thursday or next Thursday with the budget? Because it is kind of synonymous with...
That would be possible, and actually, now that I'm thinking about it, it does make sense that this will track the budget. For a second, that didn't click in my head.
We won't be acting on this likely until that last budget hearing.
So yes, if this is referred to council as a whole, I anticipate scheduling it for next Thursday, the cut hearing. Any further questions? Counselor Green?
Just for clarification, so we're removing it from Legislative Affairs and going right to council as a whole?
That would be the case, yes.
On May 30?
Yes, if that, yeah, next Thursday, May 30.
Mr. President?
Counselor?
Is the HR person going to be here that night?
If there is a cut submitted to her department or relevant to her, yes.
I can guarantee you there is.
All right then. I would assume she will be present then. That, of course, is at the discretion of the mayor, but I would certainly assume that the HR director would be present for that.
I can request her.
All right.
Thank you.
That said, I have a motion and second. Is there unanimous consent for this referral? All right, seeing no objection, I'll forego a roll call vote, and it will be referred. That concludes our business. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I would just like to remind everyone in the council and the public of the schedule for the upcoming week and a half. The next council as a whole meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, May 22, immediately following the Finance Committee meeting, which begins at 6:00 PM. Then Thursday, May 23, at 6:00 PM, we will reconvene to hear the remainder of the budget presentation. And then Thursday, May 30, at 6:00 PM, we will hear and vote on any proposed cuts, with a special City Council meeting immediately to follow, to ratify whatever decision the council as a whole committee renders. Our next regular City Council meeting will be Tuesday, June 4, at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.